Folks, if I could have your attention, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order for Tuesday, July 26th. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Planning Commission. And if you would, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get started, Commissioners and folks that are here, I would like to introduce our new Senior Planner, Ryan Fisher. He comes to us from Louisville Metro, so just wanted to introduce him this morning. So, Ryan, welcome aboard. All right, I guess first thing, let's get staff sworn in, if we could.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. All right, with that, Commissioners, first thing on the agenda here is approval of our June 28th Planning Commission regular meeting minutes. Okay, have a second. Okay, Mr. King, seconds. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page 14 of 14. Content of the motion, third line, specially should have been specifically, and fourth line, values should have been valves.
Okay. All right.
All I have.
Okay. Any addition or corrections, additional additions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected from our June 28th meeting signify by saying aye. I'll oppose no. Okay, minutes have been approved. All right, Edgar, if you would, let's, if you would, read our first docketed item, or only docketed item for today.
Docket PZ 22-021, application has been filed by Zananza Incorporated for the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan with waiver, Section 270-060, Part 6, capacity standards, fire protection standards, fire flow, for 49 lots of approximately 183 acres to be known as Old Sligo Farm Estates. The property is located at 5400 block of Old Sligo Road, LaGrange. The zoning is AG-1 Agriculture District and CO-1 Conservation District, continued from June 28th, 2022.
All right, and with that, I just want to make everyone aware that this is a continuance of our hearing from last month on the 28th. And so, I'm going to let Ms. Alvey just kind of tell us a couple, three things here, and then I will go through the hearing procedure that we agreed to, that both sides have agreed to adhere to, so.
Sure. Yes. Good morning, Amy Alvey, Assistant Director for Oldham County Planning Development Services. As Mr. Jeffrey stated, just for the record, the information that was submitted to the Planning Commission members and legal counsel for this hearing in addition to the packets from last month, there is a memo from Tetra Tech that was provided for Henry County Water. There was a letter from LaGrange Fire and Rescue. There was a response and explanation from Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, which is the attorney's applicant. There was a report from GRW that was submitted by Wyatt, Territ and Combs, which is the opposition. You should have in your packets, Opposition Part 3. So, those were any emails or letters that staff received, and then you'll have another one that was Opposition Part 4 that we received on Friday. So, just for the record, those are the four or five, one, two, three, four, five, six, sorry, six items that are in addition to your packets from last month. And if anybody did not bring their packet from last month, I do have additional if you need one. So, just raise your hand and I'll be happy to get that to you.
Thank you. And with that, just want to just quickly read here the procedure that we're going to follow today on this continuance is anyone who is presenting at the July 26th hearing must submit the information they wish to present according to the below timeline. The timeline, all information to the Henry Water and LaGrange Fire no later than July 15th. Water and Fire Review and Response sent to Oldham County Planning no later than July 21st. Staff will distribute all information and responses by email to all interested on July 22nd. And the hearing procedures today that we will follow is presentation by the applicant will have 30 minutes, excuse me, presentation by opposition will have 30 minutes, Henry Water and LaGrange Fire Response 10 minutes each, questioning rebuttal by applicant 15 minutes, questioning rebuttal by opposition 15 minutes, final statement by the opposition 5 minutes, and final statement by the applicant also 5 minutes. So, with that, Mr. Ashburner, I guess you will be representing the applicant, so if you want to come and do your presentation, sir. Is there anyone that you would like to get sworn in before you begin? Okay?
Just one second. If I can, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm again Cliff Ashburn with Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, 101 South Fifth Street, Louisville 40202. I have with me today Phil Gambrell with Prism Engineering, Kevin Person with Landmark Sprinkler, Ron Ritchie with the National Fire Sprinkler Association. I think they will all be testifying, and I'd like for them to be sworn at the same time.
Mr. Edgar, if you would, get them sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the Planning Commission's desire, in light of a controversial case like this one, to get things right and to make sure that the applicant is doing its job to demonstrate compliance with the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance, and that you all are making your decision not based on, you know, supposition, not based on things that you might have heard outside the hearing, but based on the evidence that you hear inside the hearing. Now, I'm aware that there has been at least one fairly broad public attempt at ex parte communication with this Planning Commission, two paid advertisements in the Oldham era. I don't think that that's proper. I don't think anybody who is a member of the bar would think that that is proper procedure. And I assure you that that did not come from us, and I hope that you will not take any of that into consideration when you're making the decision that we're going to ask you to make today. Okay? So, what we're going to run through today is a response to the information that was requested by this Commission the last time we were together, and frankly, a response to Henry County Water's decision between the previous hearing and today to eliminate fire hydrants as a possibility within this subdivision. We will demonstrate to you that there are alternate methods of compliance in order to allow for the subdivision to continue, and we will demonstrate how we are layering multiple of those alternate methods of compliance to really provide more fire flow and more fire protection than would otherwise be available if we relied solely on the system. So, with that, this is just kind of a roadmap that I put out just to remind everybody of where we are and sort of level set. So, the Planning Commission continued the hearing to hear about the water volume and pressure, and we are going to hear about water volume and pressure because the Henry County Water District conducted its own independent test. If you recall, the last time we were together, we had two different tests that had been done on the Henry County system that showed different numbers. And so, the Henry County Water District conducted its own model, which they have submitted to you for your consideration. At the same time that they submitted that, as was stated in the Tetra Tech study that was dated July 15th, on July 12th, the Henry County Water District voted that fire hydrants would not be allowed. That vote, they believe, was sourced from their tariff with the Public Service Commission, which is the governing agency in our state that governs utilities, although I don't 100% agree with the position of Henry County Water. I don't think that their position is not understandable, given the language of the tariff, and I'll go through that in a moment. So, with that understanding and with an understanding of what the Oldham County zoning ordinance, the Conference of Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision Regulations require, it was left to us to determine what it is we needed to do to use an alternate method of compliance contemplated in both the subdivision regulations and the code and the National Fire Protection, the NFPA code. And so, we're going to talk to you about that as we move forward. So, just to remind everybody in the room of a little quirk that sort of affects this development in a way that you might not expect. So, this is the Water District Service Area Map that I downloaded from Oldham County Water's website. And you can see there are four colors on this map. The pink is served by the Louisville Water Company. The blue is served by the Oldham County Water District. The green is served by LaGrange. And the areas that are the background color, and there are not many, but they do exist and they cover this property, are areas in Oldham County that are served by the Henry County Water District. Now, the other thing to note about those four colors is that those are four separate water districts that are subject to four separate tariffs that are all regulated by the PSC. They all have different language, and the language that's pertinent today is the Henry County Water District's language. So, that is what we need to deal with, what this Planning Commission needs to understand as we move forward is we're not just complying, and we're not just subject to regulation by this Commission and the Conference of Zoning Ordinance, the subdivision regulations, but also by what is available, given the tariff that Henry County Water District operates under. So, with that, I'm going to leave this up here for a second. I want to make one statement. I'm going to ask Phil Gambrell to come talk about fire flow and pressure because that was really the direct question from the Commission the last time we were together. And in spite of the curveball that we were all thrown, I think it's relevant for us to answer that question for you. This is part of the subdivision regulations, Section 7.3. You can see subsections F and G. F says, "Single-family detached residential developments if you have one-acre lots or more." We've talked about this last time as well. Our average lot size is well over three acres. The minimum lot size is 2.41 acres. You're required a certain amount of fire flow. In G, right below that, in the same regulation, buildings on lots that do not meet the above fire protection standards will be subject to approval by the fire chief. And so, we've spent some time before the last hearing and between the last hearing and today talking with LaGrange Fire and Rescue about what it is that LaGrange Fire and Rescue needs to do its job to protect life first, then property in this area, in this development. So, Phil, if you would come up and tell us about the Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech, the GRW study, and then how those things are shown on our map.
Phil Gambrell, Prism Engineering, 2309 Larson Trail, Louisville, Kentucky, 40299. As Cliff showed here, the regulations that we are governed by with this development is 500 gallons per minute at 20 PSI residual pressure. At the last hearing, we kind of submitted some last-minute information from an independent test that we had performed by Landmark Sprinklers, which showed that we had greater than the 500 gallons per minute and the 20 PSI of residual pressure. Understandably, the Commission wanted to allow the opposition a chance to look at this information and everyone examine it. So, that is the reason for today's meeting. Through this timeframe, we were able to supply Tetra Tech, the engineering firm that has the entire Henry County water system model and does the analysis and design decisions for the Henry County Water District. They reran their model and submitted and updated a revised report. And basically, the gist of this report was that we could have 500 gallons a minute and over 20 PSI of pressure, residual pressure, in this development as long as any of the, and the report says flushing valves instead of fire hydrants, as long as it's below the elevation of 838. So, with that, I went into the development plan and hatched out everything within the development that was below or that was above elevation 838. As you can see, it's a very small portion of the development. Actually, over 95% of the development is below elevation 838, which according to the Tetra Tech report would have over 500 gallons a minute and over 20 PSI residual pressure. And as you can see, even the seven lots that are mainly affected coming into the development, even though a majority of their property is above 838, their road frontage, they every one have road frontage that is below 838. So, if a hydrant or a flushing valve was along the roadway, that particular hydrant or flushing valve would have 500 gallons a minute and over 20 PSI of pressure. So, it meets the ordinance required. Well, I was also given a copy of the opposition's report. They commissioned GRW to do their own modeling. In reading their model, it was set up pretty much exactly the way Tetra Tech's was, utilizing the water tank on Highway 42 as their initial source for their water and pressure. Their report, though, stated that you needed to be above elevation 845 in order to meet the 500 gallons a minute. Now, at the 845, though, they got over 500 gallons a minute, but they didn't receive the 20 PSI of pressure. So, I also then went in and created the same map showing the portion of the site that is above and below 845. Obviously, as you can see, it is tremendously less than what the 838 was that Tetra Tech was able to come up with in their analysis. So, with this, we are able to show that the entire development, with respect to the backs of a few of the lots, are below the elevation that is acceptable to get 500 gallons a minute and 20 PSI of residual pressure. So, the entire development, then, with those small exceptions, meets that requirement. So, kind of concluding with that, in Tetra Tech's report, they have, based upon their analysis, shown that we can meet the pressures and the flows that are required.
So, now, we're going to start talking really in some detail about what I described as the alternate methods of compliance. This is also in the Tetra Tech analysis. This information was made available, I think, to everybody essentially simultaneously, probably within 30 minutes of learning about this. Everybody did. So, it says, "Per a decision by the Henry County Water District Board of Commissioners during their meeting on July 12th, fire hydrants will not be permitted in the proposed development." So, the last time we were all together, we were thinking, sorry, last time we were all together, we were mainly talking about where the hydrants, you know, where they are in the development. Will there be enough flow and enough residual pressure to supply them and therefore supply fire protection for the development? And this was a serious curveball. And it was a serious curveball that came between the time of our last meeting and today, and actually after even Mr. Urban's sort of procedural letter that came out on July 6th. So, once we received this, of course, as you might expect, our side got to work trying to figure out, number one, was there a basis for that decision? Because we were all laboring under the impression for several months that we were going to have fire hydrants. And then, number two, in the absence of fire hydrants, what does the zoning ordinance say? What does the subdivision regulations say? And then, what is good fire safety practice? And so, what you see here is really the source for that decision. And I just want to read this. This is actually a somewhat older portion of the tariff from 1986. Water hydrants on the district is solely for the purposes of flushing of lines and not for personal use or the purpose of fire protection. Any party using hydrant assumes the responsibility for his actions and any damages to hydrants or lines. So, I believe that is the source of the decision. As I said before, I don't 100% agree with it, but reading the language, you can understand how the board reached the conclusion that they did. So, we went about looking at, what do the rules say when you're in this situation? So, the Conference of Zoning Ordinance says fire hydrants shall be installed. Spacing requirements shall be according to the latest version of the Oldham County Fire Ordinance. And then, in Part 7, if you recall from a moment ago, I showed you a section out of the subdivision regulations where there was the standard. Right below the standard was, what do you do if the standard, if the prescriptive standard can't be met in order to meet the goal of the regulation? Here, buildings on lots that do not meet the above fire protection standards will be subject to approval by the fire chief. Examples of mitigation may include, but not be limited to, the use of sprinklers, cisterns, dry hydrants, or other alternative water sources. As we discussed before the last time we got together, we proposed at that time two 40,000 gallon cisterns with automatic filling capability and some other items that were requested in order to have a ready supply of water there within the neighborhood. And we continue to propose that today, and actually, we've augmented that. So, the fire hydrant ordinance says it requires fire hydrants in almost all circumstances for residential subdivisions, but again, that's in C1, 15218C1. In 15218C3, where there are no water mains within reasonable proximity, provisions for other water supply sources may be permitted by the enforcing authorities using NFPA Pamphlet 12311989 as a reference. That pamphlet is entitled Suburban and Rural Fire Protection, and I'm going to bring up Kevin from Landmark Sprinkler in a moment just to tell us a little bit more detail about that. But, I wanted you kind of to understand how we get from the prescriptive requirement, the alternate method of compliance. That concept carries through the subdivision regulations. It carries through the Conference of Zoning Ordinance, and it even shows up in the fire hydrant ordinance, which is not typically enforced by this Commission. And when it comes to no water mains being available, obviously, if we are prohibited from using the water main for the fire protection purpose, I think that qualifies as no water mains being within reasonable proximity. So, I'm going to ask Kevin to come up, talk a little bit about the NFPA standard, and then we'll get more into our mitigation measures.
Kevin, just name an address for the record, please.
My name is Kevin Person, home of Landmark Sprinkler, 11540 Blankenbaker Access Drive, Louisville, Kentucky.
Okay.
NFPA Standards, Suburban and Rural Fire Protection. Pamphlet 1231 is now incorporated into NFPA 1142. This contemplates fire protection through provision of an onsite or nearby water source to replicate water main flow. This provides reduction in required water source volume if automatic sprinklers are part of structures to be protected. NFPA 1142 standards, 1,000 gallons per minute for an hour for homes less than 5,000 square feet. 500 gallons per minute for homes with automatic sprinklers. One and two family dwellings, the minimum fire flow and flow duration requirements for one and two family dwellings have a fire flow area that does not exceed 5,000 square feet, should be 1,000 GPM or 500 GPM. When an approved automatic sprinkler system is installed throughout and/or separated from other buildings by a minimum of 30 feet, the minimum fire flow duration is one hour. A reduction is required. Fire flow of 50% is permitted where the building is provided with an approved automatic sprinkler system. A reduction in the required fire flow of 25% is also permitted where the building is separated from other buildings by a minimum of 30 feet. The reduction for an approved automatic sprinkler system and/or separated from other buildings cannot reduce the required flow to less than 500 GPM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good morning. Ron Ritchie with
Ron Ritchie with... I'm sorry.
Name and address, please, if you would.
Ron Ritchie, 3311 Dover Court, Lafayette, Indiana. I'm with the National Fire Sprinkler Association. I cover five states in the Great Lakes region, Indiana, Ohio, Kentucky, Michigan, and West Virginia. Prior to this, I was a career firefighter for the Lafayette Fire Department for 23 years. It's been a number of those years in code enforcement and also doing fire investigations. I went to work for NFSA in 2016 because I believe in fire sprinklers. I've seen the effectiveness of fire sprinklers. And so I'm here today just to maybe educate and just provide a little background and context for you and then answer any questions for you. The first thing I'd like to just kind of just summarize is the NFPA 1142 standard is actually titled For Water Supplies for Suburban and Rural Fire. So the pamphlet, I think it was 1231, that now references that is specifically for this kind of a circumstance that you have. And like most codes, and I've been involved, I guess I should say I sit on several NFPA and ICC codes as well, most codes try as hard as they like. You cannot address every situation. There's just no way you can do it. There's no perfect code. So every code has an alternative. And this is basically what this 1142 is trying to accomplish here. So a little bit about fire sprinklers. They are designed to protect the most vulnerable, which are the young children, the adults that are aged, and then, of course, firefighters as well who respond. What's happening a lot is firefighters are responding to these homes, and they're falling through the floors. So these sprinklers provide an extra layer of protection for that as well as protect against cancer. But anyway, let me talk a little bit about... I would almost be tempted to ask you, and I don't know if it would be offensive, have any of you had a home fire yourself? Good for you. Congratulations, because I have. And I've been on court, I've testified in court cases, and we've interviewed people to be potential jurors, and one of the questions you ask, have you ever had a fire? And it was amazing how many people actually had a fire in their homes. So anyway, I know I'm a little paranoid because I've seen so much of this, but at any rate, one of the things I would need, I need to probably help you understand if you don't understand is today's furnishings burn completely different than what they did 20 years ago. And it's because they're filled with a lot of plastics, okay? 20 years ago, you may have had 17 to 20 minutes to get out of your home. Today, you have less than two minutes before the smoke really starts becoming bad, or three to five minutes before it actually hits a flashover. Flashover means every content in the room combusts at once. So it's intenable. So the issue with a fire sprinkler system, within a minute typically, the sprinkler will operate and control the fire. And then that allows the responding fire department to arrive. So today's, I believe this, you have a volunteer fire department that responds to these, and that's not like having a career fire department. We was in the fire station, could get on a truck within four minutes, but we still wouldn't get there for seven to eight minutes. So the problem that you have here, or the thing that sprinklers help solve is being able to be almost like having an active firefighter in your home, okay? And the thing I should share with you is that in over 90% of the cases, only two sprinklers will activate. And typically, all you need is, each sprinkler will be about 15 gallons per minute. So you're typically talking about 30 gallons per minute, and you're talking somewhere in a real 10 to 15 PSI. So even though you may be a little bit lower on that 20, you would still have enough there for the sprinkler if you needed. So some of the statistics that we can share with you is that your likelihood of dying in a home fire is lessened by 85% if you do have residential sprinklers. They also reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is huge these days, fire damage up to 97%. And the reason why that is is because when a fire department arrives with a fully charged hose, they are 250 gallons per minute. So the 500-gallon rule, if you had the fire hydrants, would be for two fire hoses to be going off at one time. Now that you don't have fire hydrants, they will just, they'll have to go ahead and use the cisterns, right, to do that. But I can tell you, we do side-by-side burns throughout this entire country, do hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them. I wish I could have brought our trailer here for you today to be able to see how effective they are. You'll see that, I mean, literally, sometimes they even bring a water can in to exorcise it, okay? So anyway, I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions after I turn the time back over to Cliff. But I will just, again, I'll just reiterate that having sit on a number of code and standards and so forth, every code or every standard that I'm aware of has an alternative. And in my opinion, again, just for what it's worth, that the applicant, the owner here, has provided you with a really good, robust alternative that would protect both lives and property. Thank you.
So I want to just mention a couple of things because I don't think we hit on them well enough. As was stated, the NFPA 1142 requirement is essentially 1,000 gallons per minute for an hour if you don't have sprinklers. If you don't have sprinklers, 1,000 gallons per minute for an hour. The proposed plan that you have before you now has 100,000 gallons of ready water at, within the subdivision, to be accessed by the fire department, meaning that we're required to have 60, we have 100. We're already well above that requirement. If you employ sprinklers, which we propose to do in all of the homes, then the requirement gets cut in half. So NFPA, which again, goes back to the hydrant ordinance, which goes back to the zoning ordinance, which goes back to the subdivision regulations, would require in that instance 30,000 gallons of water to be available. We have, again, 100,000 gallons, and that's very important. One other thing that I don't think anybody really brought up in the last meeting, and I don't, I haven't heard it yet today, is how fires get fought really in the Henry County Water District. So because fire hydrants aren't available, and you can obviously talk to Chief Sitzler about this in just a moment, but typically, you're talking about transporting water, using tanker trucks, maybe using tanks that are deployed onsite and then filled and refilled in order to provide that fire protection. These two cisterns will not only be available to protect homes within old Sligo farm estates, they will also be available to the fire department for wherever a fire happens to be, providing another source, another opportunity perhaps closer to a structure than the current water supplies that exist in order to fill those tankers, in order to allow LaGrange Fire and Rescue the opportunity to deploy its full resources in order to protect life and property within its jurisdiction. So I think that is something that is also important, is also a community benefit even beyond the fire protection requirements of the NFPA and of the local ordinances. So as we showed you, as Phil described, as was shown in Henry County's independent study, there is adequate fire flow, there is adequate residual pressure. Understanding the tariff that we're operating under and understanding the dual, the kind of concurrent jurisdiction of Henry County Water and Oldham County planning, we've had to come up with alternate methods of compliance. Those include now two cisterns at 50,000 gallons each that allow for 100,000 gallons of ready water to be available in the subdivision at all times. And it also includes automatic sprinkler systems that you've just heard provide a terrific supplement for local fire protection, keeping the fire burning, either putting it out or retarding its growth in such a way that will allow the fire department time to deploy, to get there, and allow the occupants of the structure the opportunity to get out. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, or we can save that for later in the process.
Later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we've got the presentation by the opposition, and you also have 30 minutes. And Mr. Baker, do you have anyone here that will be testifying?
Just to be safe, I'd like for Shawna Stone with GRW, in case she needs to answer any questions, to be sworn in.
Sure.
Thanks.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right, Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chair Jeffries, members of the commission, my name is John Baker. I'm with Wyatt Tarran Combs, 400 West Market Street, Louisville, Kentucky, 40202. I'm here on behalf of Rallo MP Body Fox. And in response to what the commission continued this matter forward, we do appreciate the continuance, especially in a matter where, talk about a curveball. A curveball was thrown at us when data was dropped on a slide that was presented that supported that they achieved the required fire flow, although such tests and data came from one reading that did not include proposed development and the demand that comes from that proposed development and how that would affect the flow, which then led to continuance for Tetra Tech and as well as GRW to do a hydraulic analysis that showed the concerns about the existing water system. And we'll get into that a little bit. And then also just touching a little bit on subdivisions and what your charge is here today in that the applicant must show that they meet all subdivision regulations and all other applicable ordinances that are applicable to this development for you to approve, as well as for some procedural discussions related to waivers. I know the commission was here on the 28th of June and heard like the rest of us did when, after they dropped their data that they perceived to demonstrate the minimum required fire flow, they withdrew their waiver based on that. They voluntarily withdrew their waiver for fire flow, and to my knowledge, that waiver has not been reapplied for, as well as we believe other subdivision provisions need to be waived, especially in light of not requiring fire hydrants on the water lines. There is a separate subdivision regulations within fire protection that require fire hydrants. I've not seen the waiver applied for, to ask for building of a subdivision without equipping it with fire hydrants. So back to the Tetra Tech report, which also announced the decision of the Henry County Water District Board of the Commissioners during their meeting, that fire hydrants will not be permitted in the proposed development. I thought the applicant provided good information that would support this decision. And really, the concern that you can see where this is going is when you are in instances where you're really on the threshold of 500 gallons per minute, but yet, when that increases as fire will want to, and they plug in, they don't want to just stop at 500. I mean, it's like going up a hill. You don't want to just go at the very minimum to get you up the hill. You want to put the throttle in. So in the case of the fire department, they want to pull more water out of that fire hydrant, will pull more water out of that fire hydrant, increasing the gallons per minute will decrease the residual pressure. And when you get that residual pressure under 20 PSI, all kinds of protocols come into play, whether it is boil water advisories, or whether it's checking pipes for cracks, or whether or not there's bacteria that seeped into the lines, or worse, collapsing the line altogether. And we believe the report that was, that GRW has performed, supported Tetra Tech's analysis as well as Henry County Water District's decision not to allow the fire hydrants on the main lines here specifically for that reason. They're worried about protecting the water line that provides water to residents in the area. In the GRW report, in the summary, Shawna Stone concluded that during a fire flow flushing analysis, pressure in the proposed development drops below the minimum requirements of 20 PSI. Above in the table that was inserted within the report, you have average daily demands, which I think is the more common metric that we look at. And when achieving hydrant flows above 550, you're looking at 12 PSI. That's a problem. And if we were to put hydrants on the water line, are we going to be sure that fire would simply cap the GPMs at 500 every single time they respond to a fire? So you can understand the dilemma that Henry County Water was under in their mission and obligation to protect their water lines. So in that regard, we believe that the Henry County Water District decision was the accurate and correct decision. Moving forward, last time we were before you, and I realize the first public hearing involved all kinds of different discussions based on the subdivision regulations that must be met. Today, we're talking about fire flow and water supply and fire hydrants. But I wanted just to remind everybody that, again, these subdivision regulations are based by law on the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan. And in that Comprehensive Plan, it discusses goals and objectives such as, we should not encourage development that outpaces necessary infrastructure. And essentially, that's the crux of this case. We're looking at a development that's being requested. This isn't a need, this is a want. And yes, you're allowed to subdivide your property as part of your property rights, but you have to do that within the context of the applicable subdivision regulations. Move this mouse, and that box right there is the highlighted provision I was alluding to, talking about locating in areas where existing infrastructure and services before moving into less developed areas of the county. I think it's safe to say this is a less developed area of the county. It's also an area that's been demonstrated by Henry County Water that is questionable water service to provide for fire flow, to such a degree that they have made the decision not to allow fire hydrants on their water line. Now, moving over to the subdivision regulations that are built upon the foundation of the Comprehensive Plan, you have 5.2 subdivision design principles. When considering an application for subdivision of land, the commission shall be guided by the standards contained within the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, and any other applicable studies or regulations. We know that in Section 2.1, for interpretation, the subdivision regulations state that shall means must. So then we move to Section 7.7, which is a separate and distinct subdivision regulation than fire protection. It's entitled Other Infrastructure Facility Standards. Water supply, every subdivision shall be provided with a complete water distribution system adequate to serve the area being developed with pipes, valves, fire hydrants, and other water facilities. That's a requirement. That's also consistent with the requirement that's set forth in fire protection, but this stands on its own. I've not seen a waiver applied for this provision. This provision is not being met by the proposed subdivision. This regulation alone allows the commission today to deny the proposal. We move back to Section 7.3, earlier in Chapter 7, where it talks about fire hydrants. Fire hydrants shall be installed and spacing requirements shall be according to the latest version of the Fire County, Oldham County Fire Hydrant Ordinance. That ordinance states, "In single-family residential subdivisions, fire hydrants shall be spaced no farther than 800 feet apart, measured over hard surfaces easily accessible to fire protection apparatus. Any single-family residential property must be within 400 feet of a hydrant, measured over hard surfaces easily accessible to fire protection apparatus." Again, though not a specific Oldham County subdivision regulation, another ordinance that applies to this application, it is also not being met. This was the ordinance on fire flow, as we know, 500 GPM with a residual of 20 PSI. That is also not being met. There was a waiver applied for this provision, which we are talking about, that when in front of the commission, "Such waivers may be granted only without detriment to the public good, without imaging, or without impairing the purpose, basic objectives, and intent of these regulations, and without impairing the desirable general development of the neighborhood." You also have two prongs when considering that. Exceptional hardship, where the commission finds that the strict compliance with these regulations would create an undue hardship because of exceptional, unique topographic or other natural man-made... or other natural man-made physical conditions. That hardship is not being claimed. In the letter that was originally filed with the fire flow waiver, it said undue hardship, but it does not reference hardship due to topographic or other man-made physical conditions encountered on the particular land. Thus, we look at design innovation and large-scale development. And in this case, you know, when asking questions about whether or not we're meeting that prong of the waiver, are we really, I mean, is this really something that has been proved that a sustained fire flow of 500 GPM can be met? Or is this one where it's just saying the alternative is good enough? Again, I don't believe we need to get to this today because Olden County subdivision 7.7 is not being met. However, should you entertain the waiver for today, we don't believe that prong is being met. We don't believe that it's been shown that fire department response, who put their law on the lines every single day, when they do respond, are we sure that a continued minimum sustained flow will be achieved? We know that after certain hours of the day, only certain, or perhaps no firehouses are being manned after 6:00 PM. We're relying on a lot of volunteer firemen who are putting their life on the line to get to the property, to start water on the fire, to then start a relay shuttle to get fire from the cistern. Once that first tanker or first two tanker trucks are out, can we certainly say that a minimum sustained fire flow will be achieved until the fire is out? I don't think we've been proven that or demonstrated that. So just as if the analysis gets to the waiver, we do not believe that prong is being met either. Here is the property, just showing some of the firehouses that are stationed around the property to give you an example of, you know, just a visual of perhaps LaGrange Fire is there and Johnny on the spot. What about the next fire district or the third fire district? Those are the concerns residents in the area have with respect to maintaining a sustained fire flow. Should one of these fire district houses respond in more of a delay, not to their fault, not to their fault, just because of circumstances? You have to sometimes employ the worst-case scenarios in these thought processes. And this is an example that I put in here that would be an example for the Commission to adopt to deny the waiver that was being requested simply on fire flow. Again, I've not seen the waiver request for not supplying the subdivision with fire hydrants, but on fire flow, this would be a good example of what the Commission could use to deny a waiver. Also, the precedent that this would set moving forward where subdivision could locate with no fire hydrants in the subdivision whatsoever. You know, there have been a development in Olden County that was approved on Sprinkler Bradford Farms, I believe in 2005, was outfitted with sprinklers. However, that also had a fire hydrant install, or fire hydrants installed in that development, which is right behind St. Francis off Buckeye Lane. We know of another example, I believe it was Exton Meadows, I think in 2006, that also proposed a mitigation plan that involved sprinklers very near North Olden Fire, but also denied. So now we're looking into brand-new territory where we're looking at a development offering sprinklers as a mitigation plan, but no fire hydrants. This is new territory. And with that, I will rest what I have my remarks for right now. I know there's other people that want to speak, so I will lend the lectern over to anyone else that wants to come up and share their concerns. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. We'll need to get you sworn in and get your name and address for the record, please.
Trish Henry on 1309 Park Shore Road, LaGrange.
Go ahead and swear in if you would.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So first of all, I'd like to say that rules matter. I'm a rule follower, have been all my life. Rules are there for a reason, requirements are there for a reason, even minimum acceptable requirements. This proposal does not meet several, if not many, minimum acceptable requirements.
Henry, I'd just want to remind you that there needs to be discussion on the water.
Absolutely. And that is one of them.
That needs to be, I mean, totally.
It is one of them. So Henry County Water, even though the fire hydrants are no longer in play, Mr. Ashburner and Mr. Gambrell brought up fire flow, so I'd like to speak to that. Henry County decided not to put fire hydrants in for a reason, and I believe it's because they can't provide adequate fire flow. That's certainly been in controversy, certainly according to Linda Ridwell of the Public Service Commission who I spoke with, is aware of that and acknowledges that. In the Public Service Commission Appendix, it lists all of the different water districts throughout Kentucky and what they can and cannot provide and what their tariffs provide. And under the notes from that appendix, it clearly shows that the Henry County Water District does not provide fire protection. In fact, in the notes, it says, "Hydrants are for flushing purposes only. Installation of fire hydrants in new real estate subdivision developments is prohibited." So we asked the question, why is it prohibited? And when we're going back and forth with the different testing, I think the common denominator of all of the testing or projections, the engineering projections as far as obtaining fire flow, 500 GPM sustained, all of the engineering projections and tests, the common denominator was one or both of those pressure restricting valves had to be in the, I'm going to say, open position, not restricting, and I may not be using the right term, or bypassed. What are the consequences of opening that up? One of you commissioners asked, are the valves going to be in the open position all the time? Is someone going to have to go switch, flip a switch if a fire breaks out? So I actually spoke with several people at the Kentucky Water District, I mean, Division of Water. One of them was Terry Humphries. And I asked him, I'm confused why Henry County Water District 2 is saying they can't provide fire flow, and yet a developer is purporting that they can if they only open those valves up? And I said, is it, were that easy? Would we just flip the switch? Wouldn't they have done it years ago to provide lots more water pressure for people who are already saying they don't have enough water pressure? Wouldn't that be a good idea? And he said, well, no, there are some consequences to that, or potential consequences. And I said, well, what are they? And he said, well, those pipes that are there, you know, depending on what they are, may or may not hold up to that sustained pressure. I said, you mean like they could burst? And he said, yeah, that could be, that could be one thing. And so without knowing, we would be rolling the dice. I'm not a gambler. I don't like taking chances unless I have to. The cisterns are exactly the same thing. The applicant is asking you to gamble, to roll the dice. Take a chance, believe us, we got these cisterns, we've got these sprinklers. Hell, we may actually ask every resident to carry on their person a fire extinguisher at all times. That is not the same as abiding by the rules. And the rules say fire hydrants within 400 feet. A cistern, I don't care if it has 50,000 or 100,000 gallons in it, it is not in front of that house, it's not within 400 feet of that house. And what that means is if a fire department is called in, they're used to using fire hydrants. Do they practice on alternatives? Sure, they have to. This is a development that does not have to happen. It's a want, as Mr. Baker said. It's a want from one man. Do we roll the dice? Do we gamble? Do we break the rules that exist? I say no. Why take the chance? This is a want, not a need. And furthermore, I couldn't agree more wholeheartedly with the idea that, according to the AG1 ordinance, development should not be encouraged in areas without proper infrastructure. In fact, in Section 2, it says, "The intent is to minimize development in areas where urban-type utilities and services cannot be efficiently provided." This is exactly the case. And this is why the water is coming up as a problem, as well as a host of other reasons. I urge you, don't break the rules, don't roll the dice. There are communities around the country moving away from cisterns that are already in place. Why? Because they can't be adequately maintained. Who's going to maintain them? When they're under private maintenance, do we have inspectors going in? Who's inspectors? State? The county? No. We have to rely on the chance that they're being maintained and will be fully available. And then we have to rely on the chance that the firefighters hook up their tankers, unload their water, and create a relay system. In Taunton, Massachusetts, just published in June 16, 2022, there was an article about who's responsible if cisterns fail on Taunton roads with no hydrants. So Taunton City Council has decided to ban cisterns in any new developments, and in fact, they're moving away from it. And they've said this is a problem. And according to Officer Jonathan Nunes of the Taunton Fire Department, of Taunton Fire Department Communications, he said they're not very popular with the fire department. And the fire department does not like them because there's no mechanism in place to ensure they are maintained and in working order. The fire department has neither the training nor the tools and equipment to service cisterns or hydrants for that matter. So again, there are problems with it, and people are recognizing it elsewhere. So I urge you, let's not break the rules, let's adhere to the rules, let's not roll the dice.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to this docket? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Still got about it, nine minutes. We'll need to get you sworn in also.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
We need name and address for the record, please.
E. Kohler, Fox, 4701 Tobacco Road, LaGrange. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Trish Henry on just said. Is this approvable? This is the question. There's a waiver request on the table to replace conventional fire hydrants with cisterns to hold the water. In addition, Sunanza asks that home sprinklers be required, a supplement. All of this evolved in the absence of having fire hydrants with the required flow, required fire hydrants. The Olden County Kentucky Code of Ordinances, Chapter 158.18, is the ordinance. Waiving this requirement isn't even on the table. Forty-nine homes could be a disaster. It would be shirking the responsibility to approve this for our county. To consider the fire suppression portion of this proposal would be moving backwards, backwards from our comprehensive zoning plan and in contradiction to it. As the Indiana salesman said, I'm not sure if he was a salesman, the Indiana man said, sprinklers could play a meaningful role in fire control at the outset, if in working order. They're meant as an adjunct to fire hydrants, not in place of them. Were I on this Commission, there's some other information I'd like to have. Should you approve this proposal, there will be no governing body to make sure sprinklers are in working order, other than possibly installation, if then. How will we know that each of the 49 homeowners will perform proper maintenance? I ran across an interesting statistic in a publication called Quick Response to Fire Supply from July, from July 2019. Could I have the overhead?
Sure.
I'm not going to know how to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Fox? Need to get you sworn in also, please.
I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Grace for the record.
Rallo Fox, 4701 Tobacco Road, LaGrange. I want to tell you all about a story. We're talking about cisterns to put out fire. It's a relay system. It's a bucket brigade. Tankers go to the cistern, they fill up, they take the water to the fire, they either dump it into a big swimming pool apparatus, or they hook a hose up to it and they spray that water on the fire. We had a very similar fire not more than five or six miles from here 10 days ago. A barn caught fire in Pendleton, right across the street from the Campbell'sburg Fire Department. The call came in at 9:36 PM. A total of six tankers, six engines, and eight tankers from six different fire departments fought that fire on a relay system for six hours. They had to drive about a mile down the road to the corner of LaSpree Parkway and 153 and fill up tankers and bring them back to the fire, or they had to drive to the Valero Gas Station that's right there at exit 28, and behind that is a hydrant, and fill up their tankers there and drive back. Eleven horses died in that fire. Thank God, no people did. Forty-five firemen to fight that. It's almost exactly like what we're talking about here. Fire engines and tankers running back and forth to a cistern and a fire and hope to God everybody gets out okay. We can replace the structures, but we can't replace the little kid, or as I'm called, a hippie, we can't replace the horses. I think the cisterns are a terrible idea. This subdivision is beyond the normal services in our county, and I believe it should be denied at this time. Thank you.
Fox? If we, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess for the Commissioners, and I would just ask that you, as the audience, do not, you know, talk to the Commissioners during our recess. We'll come back here in about 20 minutes, well, 10:20. So we'll take a 10-minute recess, Commissioners. Folks, I'd like to have your attention, and we'll come back to order here for our Plenary Commission hearing this morning. We are now down to the hearing procedure of Henry Water and LaGrange Fire Response. They each have 10 minutes each. So Mr. Tyson, this is Henry Water, who wants to? Okay. Okay. All right. Mr. Morris. Get you sworn in, and is there anyone else that will be testifying on behalf of Henry County Water?
They may be. I do have members of Tetra Tech Engineering Firm here.
Okay, let's get everybody sworn in at the same time.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right, and Mr. Morris, a name and address for the record, please.
Keith Morris here, County Water District, 8955 Main Street, Campbell'sburg, Kentucky. I would like to apologize for my voice. I have been dealing with the sickness, okay? And I do believe that there's certain individuals here either opposed or for that felt my sickness. May have been a timely sickness last week, but I can assure you that I was sick, okay? And just for record, we'd like to confirm the district is capable of supplying the potable supply and demand for the proposed development. This was based on a hydraulic analysis by Tetra Tech Engineering. I would also like to say, normally when any development comes through before us, this decision is based solely on a hydraulic analysis, all right? However, I felt in this manner that further testing should be applied, okay? That's why we actually went out in the field and did further testing, all right? I do feel that the district kind of went over and beyond as far as supplying those methods as well. Since our last board meeting, or since the last meeting here, we did have a board meeting that the Commissioner, the board did say that there would be no fire hydrants installed, okay? And I know this may have been a type of a curve ball, but I will say, this was the first board meeting after the first first board meeting after the first technical review that I have attended, okay? So that's the reason for that. You know, our main concern is to make sure our current customers are not adversely affected with this development. But at the same time, you know, if the Plenary and Zoning Commission does allow these methods for, to mitigate for fire protection, the district will, will entertain those methods, okay? Well, I know I'm here to give a presentation, but to me, I'm more here to answer the questions that you all have. So I'd like to suffice to that and give you all more time to answer any questions, okay?
Does Tetra Tech have anything that they want to add, or at this point? Nope? Okay. Mr. Teis, anything that you would like to add? And just name and address for the record.
Sure. J.D. Teis, Teis Law Offices, 209 North First Street. I'm LaGrange for the fire protect, the attorney for the LaGrange Fire Protection District. I have with me today Chief Jim Sitzler and Major Keesmith. I think they were sworn at the beginning. I think from our perspective, when this issue was originally raised to us in the technical review, the concern was about flow and the mitigating measures proposed by the applicant for two 40,000 gallon cisterns to assist with getting us to whatever level that we needed to meet the subdivision regulations if we weren't at 500 gallons per minute or the required PSI.
Can you speak up a little more?
I apologize. Is that better?
Sure.
On July 15th, we received notice for the first time that we weren't going to have fire hydrants in this development. And that's substantially different than what we perceived to be the fire protection plan in place. Originally, in technical review, it was the two 40,000 gallon cisterns as well as fire hydrants. So this is a substantially different waiver, I think. We're not really talking just about waiving the fire flow. We are talking about waiving the requirement of fire hydrants. Now, I think Mr. Ritchie, and I think it was, raised a very valid point about what the NFPA regulations and recommendations, which are referenced in the Olden County statutes state, is that they account for lots of different scenarios. So if you can't meet the required water flow because of where you live, or whatever the factor may be, you can employ mitigating measures. I think the applicant was just informed for the first time as well on July 15th that fire hydrants were no longer going to be a part of this subdivision, for whatever reason. You know, that's not our call. So in the 10 days between now and then, they have come to us and said, you know, what if we increase the cistern size? What if we input the sprinklers in all the houses? And I think those are mitigating type of measures that can be implemented, that we would be okay with, but that's different than what you all were dealing with at the June hearing, which I wasn't here for. And as I understand it, is different than what the commission's trying to consider today in terms of the waiver on the table. Is that something we would ultimately accept, you know, sprinklers with cisterns? I think it certainly could be, and it's something we could get to. But that's different, when Chief Sitzler submitted his letter on July 21st, last Thursday, it basically was, that's responding to the development that there weren't going to be hydrants, so we would only have the two 40,000 gallon cisterns. So the position in terms of the waiver that was on the table is that without the hydrants, two 40,000 gallon cisterns isn't going to cut it. Now, increased cisterns, a sprinkler system perhaps would. That would be consistent with what NFPA recommendations would be for a development that doesn't have adequate fire hydrants or adequate fire mains. But I do think that's substantially different than the waiver we were asked to address about fire flow, because we're now dealing with no fire hydrants in the system. But I don't think that that necessarily would be fatal in terms of, you know, what we could work with and what we would accept. We've seen, you know, I think Mr. Ashburner got us the letter, putting sprinkler systems on the table, and that certainly was something that we would want, now that we know that fire hydrants aren't going to be in the system or in the development. And increased cistern size, I think, is something we would want, to make sure that you have adequate fire prevention measures. But I do think this curve ball about there being no fire hydrants in the development is substantial and changes, you know, what we're dealing with. So I do think between when you all were here in June and what we're dealing with now, this is a different type of waiver. So I don't have anything further. I mean, I have Chief with me, I have Major Smith with me, they're happy to answer questions. So I'll reserve our time. You know, you all can proceed with rebuttal and questions.
Okay, so that completes your, okay, presentation? All right. With that, commissioners, just so you all will know, after we do the rebuttal from applicant and rebuttal from opposition, then I'll open it up for commissioners' questions. So we will have an opportunity for 20 minutes of questions, you know, for both sides. But at this time, Mr. Ashburner, I'd like to call you back up for rebuttal by the applicant, and you would have 15 minutes, sir.
Just a point of clarification, it is rebuttal and questions, correct?
Sorry?
Yeah. Rebuttal and questions of prior witnesses?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I would like first to ask Keith Morris from Henry County Water. He's got a couple of quick questions for you. So, uh, the, the, the board's action on July 12th, that, that was, that preceded either the finalization of the Tetra Tech study or, and I don't even know if you all reviewed the GRW study that came in. Is that correct?
What was your first question? Did, did we?
Did, did the board, did the board have the benefit of the updated Tetra Tech analysis or the GRW study when it decided not to allow the fire hydrants?
That, that decision was solely based on, on the tariff, all right? As far as the, the Tetra Tech report, I do believe it was given to, at that meeting, okay? But as far as the other report, no, there's, no, we haven't.
Okay. Thank you. And then, is it appropriate for me to ask a question of Chief Sitzler, even though he did not testify today?
Yep, sure.
So, Chief, you and I have spoken a couple of times, and, and as I think you understand, the mitigation measures that our client is proposing to employ are designed to, you know, protect life and property. But I wanted, I think you can help us and help the commission understand the position of structures within this subdivision relative to the provision of structures in other parts of Henry County or Oldham County areas that are served by Henry County Water. And so I just have a couple of quick questions about how you address fires in the Henry County Water District. If you could just kind of give me a walkthrough of, you know, you get the call, you get the water, you start to address the fire.
Okay, the area he's referring to, we call that a T-box area. That's a tanker box, okay? So if we get knocked out for a fire in any of those areas, we'll respond with our fire engines, probably an engine from each station, a tanker from each station. So you're probably going to get two to three to four pumpers, three tankers, but we have an automatic mutual aid agreement with Ballardsville, okay? We get knocked out, they get knocked out, all at the same time. We don't have to call for, for their assistance, okay? And Ballardsville's going to send probably two engines and their two tankers, okay? Depending on the time of day, we'll probably get a tanker and an engine from Westport, okay? But our primary backup is going to be B-Ville. We've been, we've been, and we respond with them too. We've been doing mutual aid with Ballardsville for, my God, 10 years. So, and it even reflects on our ISO rating because we can, it's an automatic response. So we get credit for that, and they get credit for us. So in answering your question, we're going to, the subdivision's not going to have any hydrants, and we'll, we'll treat it just like a house across the street on Sligo Road or anywhere in that area. We're not going to treat it any different. You know, that's a tanker box, we have to bring our tankers. But we've got our tankers set up. We spent quite a bit of money on these tankers where we can get, you got two ways of attacking these fires. You can, you can nurse, which our pumper tankers have 1,500 GPM pumps, 1,700 to 2,000 gallon tanks. So, and we've made sure that, we order these trucks, that normally a tanked pump valve is only three inch, three inch, where ours are four and three and a half. We've made sure that we can get in excess of 600 gallons per minute out of our tanks, okay? You got a lot of options when you close 600 to 700 gallons of water. Now, if we go beyond that, that's when we set up the dump tanks off the tankers, and we'll start dumping water in the tanks, and the tech engine at the scene will start using the tank water. Now we can go beyond the 600 gallons a minute, okay? So, um, we're obligated to, whether this subdivision gets approved or not, we're obligated to, to provide fire protection for any residents that's on, he referred to Henry County Water, but any, any residents that lives in that area, because there are no hydrants, we treat it just like we would any other. So the fact, do I like to have the hydrants? Absolutely. But you're limited to the flow, okay? And we're okay with, with increase in the cisterns and the sprinkler systems. This will probably be the first subdivision that gets approved that has a sprinkler system, that has had to put sprinklers in. So, did I answer your question?
You did.
Okay.
But I got, I got two more. So the first is, as it stands now, from the time you get called to the time you're putting water on a structure, what is your average amount of time? And then a follow-up to that is, does the proximity of the cisterns help in that regard? If you were addressing a fire within the subdivision?
Okay. In terms of response, we are not a full-time fire department at the moment, but we do have a, a part-time crew that works Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And I usually put four to five people on. So during that time period, yes, we have basically paid people. Ballardsville, since they backed us up, they have a part-time crew at their station. So during the day that we're getting, we're getting, you're getting paid personnel from both stations, okay? Beyond that, it's strictly volunteer. Our volunteers usually in, in the station one, which is LaGrange, we can get a truck out in less than five minutes, which is pretty good on volunteers. So in terms, in terms of getting to the scene, you're talking road miles. We cover 50 square miles. So it depends on where you live, you know, how quick we can get there. So I don't know if that answered your question. What was the other one?
Does the proximity of the cisterns help?
Pull the mic a little closer to you.
Proximity of the cisterns, would that be a help to you in addressing a fire within the subdivision or in the area?
Well, yes, because we don't have any hydrants in that area where we can refill our tankers. The closest one is going to be at our station three on 42. And basically, that's where Oldham County Water ends, at the back of road. So anything that, whether it's on Organ Creek Road or Bohannon Lane or any areas that don't have, even at Henry County, Oldham County Water, they don't have hydrants. So when you use tankers, you had to have a field site. So the cisterns will definitely come in handy as a field site, especially with the capacity that they're going to be containing. So.
Thank you very much. I just have two quick questions, one for you, Mr. Fox, and one for you, Mrs. Fox. Okay. So you, you talked about that tragic barn fire. Nobody here is, is happy about that outcome. But I wanted to ask you two things about the barn. One, obviously, the barn was not built to residential code, which has certain fire retarding measures in it. And then two, do you know whether the barn was equipped with fire sprinklers or not?
I don't know the answer to either of those questions.
Okay. You would? Thank you. You showed a, a printout about fire systems, fire sprinkler systems that have failed. Do you know whether that was commercial or residential buildings?
It had a.
Get you back up by the mic, please.
I don't know the answer. You might know the answer. It was, it was on the header.
Yeah.
It was on the header.
Okay, thank you. The answer is, was, it was commercial buildings. That was, that was, that was discussed in that chart. There are commercial buildings where people will turn the valve off, they've got a five-year inspection cycle, so in that five-year inspection cycle, different things can happen. So clearing up those items that I wanted to clear up, I think makes it pretty clear that we are complying with the county zoning ordinance, with the county subdivision regulations, with the fire protection ordinance that has to do with hydrants, based on the alternate methods of compliance. Each one of those, and you heard Mr. Ritchie testify just a little while ago in our case in chief, about his involvement in codes, his involvement with the NFPA, and how you can't really solve for every single situation. So all of these codes have alternate methods of compliance in them. And in Oldham County, among the alternate methods are cisterns and fire sprinklers. And so we are providing both. And the net effect of providing both, when it comes to the size of the cisterns relative to the amount of water that is needed under the NFPA requirements, which are, again, referenced in the fire hydrant ordinance and carried through to the zoning ordinance and carried through to the subdivision regulations, is that with sprinkled structures, we'll have more than three times the amount of ready, available water within the subdivision, ready for Chief Sitzler and other folks who may come to address a fire in the neighborhood. Even without the sprinklers, we would have 40,000 gallons extra beyond what the requirement currently is. With regard to the one statement about Section 7.7 of the subdivision regulations, that states that you are required to have a fire syst, I mean, a water system rather adequate for these various attributes, not that you have to include these various attributes in your water system, those are examples. And so I, I think, as we discussed before, we are subject to the concurrent jurisdiction of this commission, as well as what we can obtain from the Henry County Water District, which is subject to its own tariff. So we are complying. With regard to the procedure on waivers, that was a statement that was raised. Based on my reading of the code, and obviously I'll leave it to the commission to consult with your own legal counsel, the presence of these alternate methods of compliance within the various codes says to me that these are just that. They are alternates. You should provide this. If you can't, you must provide that. We are not asking to provide no fire protection. We're not asking to provide no water. We are simply asking to, to use the alternate, alternatives that are listed in the ordinance itself, and we are layering them together in such a way that we provide more than adequate protection, both for the sprinklers as well as the cisterns. I don't believe I have anything. Um, I don't believe I have anything else, uh, with regard to rebuttal, I'll be happy to make a closing statement when the time's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, now we'll move into, uh, questions, rebuttal by the opposition. Um, Mr. Baker, do you want to start?
I only have a few questions, Mr. Chair, if that's okay? Um, and these are kind of general, I don't really, I could ask a number of questions and have them just answered, or if you would prefer, call each individual up. Um, I have a question just based on the presentation that, that Mr. Ashburner provided, just trying to understand the cistern system, um, and more particularly also the sprinkler system. Are the sprinklers that will be put throughout the residential structures, will they be hooked up to Henry County Water, or are they hooked up to the cistern?
Just name and address, say, please, for the record.
It's addressed directly to the Water Service main.
Sir, give us your name and address again.
It's the, uh, 3311 Doverport, Lafayette, India.
Okay.
And when those systems are designed for residential, I know there's differences between residential and commercial, commercial has much harder requirements for head height and places in the structure for where you place the sprinkler heads. So let's just say hypothetically, for Old Sligo Estates, where would the sprinkler heads be placed throughout residential homes, including second floor?
Yeah, great, great question. So, um, sprinklers, um, in residential, whether it be apartments or whatever, are all going to operate the same, um, they have a particular residential sprinkler head that actually throws a pattern that's a lot different, higher to the wall, and it's designed to prevent flashover. Now, the 13D sprinkler systems, you have three different types of sprinkler systems, you have NFPA 13 that are commercial-based, you have sprinklers throughout the entire structure, including the attic. 13R is residential for like apartments, less than four stories, and 13D, you, you only really are required to put the sprinkler heads where, yeah, most of the fires occur, and we're trying to protect property, so you would not have them in an attic, for example, okay? Um, so, does that answer your, your question?
Do we know which sprinkler system will be installed on the residential structure?
Yeah, NFPA 13D.
B.
D, I'm sorry, D as in domestic.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. Um, I think that's all I have about the sprinkler system, um, just a couple of questions, maybe from the fire district, just to understand, based on, um, and I'm not sure, maybe, maybe Landmark needs to answer this question, because it's about the cistern, I mean, what's the fill rate of the cistern? Do we know that?
I just read the report, um, it's supposed to be automatic refill, so in other words, it will, it will keep up with whatever's being taken off of the, the tank, that's my understanding, is that correct?
Like 500 gallons per minute?
Get you to come up, so we can get it on the record, please.
Kevin Person, Landmark Sprinkler. It would just be filled with the water pressure that is on site there.
Do we know when that's being filled, where the residual pressure in the system goes?
It will be, it will be filled continuously. When that tank goes down, you had an automatic flow valve comes up, it will notify if the system's low, it will automatically start filling when it fills, it's full.
Do we know when that cistern's being refilled, what the residual pressure in the line will be, how that's affected when the cistern is being refilled? So during the, the shuttle runs, if the cistern needs to be refilled a couple times, we know what the residual pressure in the water line will be during that occurrence?
It, it would not have much effect on it at all.
Okay. Good. I, I'll defer to the chief, because he's certainly an expert volunteer. Um, I understand it's a 50,000 gallon cistern, and you've got 1500 gallons in your tank, so 50,000, or 15,000, by 1500, I, I don't know how many you could actually fill before you would ever need to refill it, but is that, uh, uh, any, or 30?
Okay, basically when the tankers get on the scene, we've got, uh, about 5,500, 5,500 gallons just from LaGrange, I have another 4,000 from Ballardsville. So basically I'm going to, I'll have 9,500's of gallons of water just on the trucks, uh, tankers, not counting the tanks on the, the booster tanks on the pumper. So we're going to have an excess of 10,000 gallons of water. So, in answer to his question in terms of how many times you can fill, so let's say I've got 10,000 gallons of water, I can fill, all these tankers can fill five times on the one cistern. You look at the other cistern, add another five, now they can refill, all these tankers can refill 10 times. So you're talking a lot of water. So, uh, for a fire to exceed that out there, is, uh, it's going to have to be one heck of a barn.
How long does it usually take when you guys arrive on the scene to hook up to the cistern?
John.
All right, yeah. Sorry, shared mic with you, chief. Uh, just a question, just so everyone here understands, when fire responds and relies on cisterns, A, when you arrive on the scene with your tanker trucks filled, how long does that usually take to deplete that water source before you need to go refill at the cistern? And then when at the cistern, how long does that take to hook up and, and fill?
That's sort of a hard question to answer, just because, uh, uh, initially, if we have a fire out there, or any fire, it doesn't have to be in this subdivision, be on Sligo Road, we're going to, we're going to nurse from the tankers, okay? Uh, like I've said before, if it looks like the fire is going to exceed the 600, 600, 650 gallons, we provide on the scene with the trucks, that's when we set the dump tanks up and go to the cisterns, okay? So, uh, we'll have, uh, we'll designate, uh, one pumper for, uh, probably a mutual aid pumper that will go to the cistern and hook up and stand by. And, uh, so when the tankers come to the cistern, uh, they just hook up a couple of three-inch lines, they, they could probably be filled up in four minutes or less, uh, since you got a pumper there at, at the cistern. So, I don't, I don't see, I don't see it as a problem.
I was, I was just asking, what's the time where response was?
Right.
That's all. Um, then lastly, you did mention in the response to Mr. Ashburner's question about, you believe approximate average response time is around five minutes, you said, to, and that is arriving at the fire, or?
Okay, that's, that's sort of a hard one to, to figure, because I've got to get, during the day, I've got people at your station, so they're responding pretty quick, I'm going to say within a minute and a half, they're out the door, okay? Now we're talking road miles. So, depends on where it is in the district. If it's out on 42, that, that's a pretty good height, okay? Because remember I said we cover 50 square miles? And some of these roads, Organ Creek Road, you know, that's a pretty good, pretty good trip, 524, uh, the Morgan Conservation Park out there, that's a pretty good, pretty good trip. And, uh, uh, Bohannon Lane, and the reason I mention these, these, these roads aren't as good as what you have on 42. So you're not going to be going as quick, uh, down these roads. So in terms of how long it takes us to get there, uh, we'll get there as quick as we can. I mean, there's no good infinitive answer to that, because, uh, depends on where it's at. Now, if it's in town, yeah, we, we can get, we can get the fire in town within, uh, a couple of minutes. So, but you start getting in these outlined areas, it's a, it's a different story.
Thank you, chief, and just one more question before you leave, when you talked about your average response time, what happens when it's two in the morning in the winter, or three in the morning? Is that a little bit more difficult to respond to?
Absolutely, but you do the best you can with what you got. So, uh, like at nighttime right now, we rely on volunteers. So the paid guys don't come in until six in the morning. So.
Chief, thanks for everything, and thanks for everything you do in your department, appreciate that. Um, as far as rebuttal, um, you know, our stance, for those that, you know, are opposed to this proposal, is the same, and you've heard the refrain, and this is just a situation where we have outpaced where the county services and infrastructure is. That's why we're having such an elongated process in public hearing for a 49 lot subdivision. This is one of the longest public hearings I've heard for a subdivision, that's supposed to be meeting subdivision requirements, and it's a ministerial decision. Now we have waivers on the table, multiple waivers, where only one was applied for. Um, we believe that's the only waiver initially, that could be arguably even before the planning commission, yet we have other subdivision regulations that are being implicated now, where there's been no waiver request for relief from those subdivision requirements. Um, we just believe that's a testament to, to this being too far from existing services to, to provide the kind of safety that this commission's looking for, to provide the kind of safety that was, you know, just thought about when these subdivision regulations were put in place, based on the guidelines and principles of the comp plan. So, um, you know, we still believe and maintain that this is just not the right time for this land to be dealt, developed into 49 subdivision lots, uh, based on all the testimony that has been provided to you, the arguments from June and July. Um, and anybody else? I think Mr. Gardner has some comments.
Mark Gardner, 4727 Dover Road. Uh, Mr. Ashburner, just a quick question for you, uh, do you intend for there to be sprinklers in barns or outbuildings within this development?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm a fact witness, but, you know, I, I'll try to answer the question, right now, we're putting sprinklers in the homes.
In homes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, the, back to the barn fire that Raul Fox brought up, uh, so it took a little over six hours for them to put that fire out. Uh, our family farm is at 5,400 Old Sligo Road, uh, during that time, water pressure at our farm, uh, which would be directly across the street from this, uh, development and sort of by the same water line, uh, filled at zero, to the point we weren't able to fill water tanks for our horses. Um, so that was a pretty significant impact. Um, uh, I, I have no idea like what the volume that was, like how much water it, it took to put out that fire, um, but six hours, uh, is a pretty significant amount of time. Um, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wanted to get you sworn in, and then name and address, Ms. Gardner.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
John Ames, 5510 Old Sligo Road.
Last name?
Ames. A-M-E-S.
Okay.
Um, Keith Morris.
Do, when these cisterns are filling, do you have any idea how long it's going to take for them to fill? I know it's going to depend on pipe size, stuff like that, and what our water pressure will be as current residents when they are filling.
Well, John, as far as that, I, I do don't know, okay? That might be more of a question, uh, for their engineers, okay? Um, I will say this, um, you know, if, if this does get passed, as far as the cisterns or the sprinkler system, there, there are questions that the district does have, okay? As far as, as far as maintenance, as far as who's paying, how it's being paid, how it's metered, how it's constructed, and, and that's something that our engineering firm will, will have to approve, okay? But as far as answering those questions, I do not know.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Engineer have, uh, the answer to that question?
Phil Gambril, Prism Engineering. The answer to that question is, it's going to vary depending upon what demand is on the line at the time.
Okay.
Uh, if it's during peak hours, uh, it ultimately is limited to the size pipe that is going into, uh, the fill valve.
Do we know what size pipe we're putting in it?
Uh, the system hasn't been fully designed yet, as Keith mentioned, uh, through the, this is for a preliminary subdivision approval. Once this is through, we go into the design process, and we will work with the folks at Tetra Tech to supply design calculations for flow and for valves.
And then at what stage of the project will the cisterns be installed? Stage one, three, five?
The cistern at, uh, the main entrance into, off of Old Sligo Road, will be built immediately with the, uh, approval of the development. The second one, uh, will be shortly after that, uh, because that will be built as a construction entrance into the development, and the understanding is when those entrances are built, the cisterns have to go in. So as long as we put an entrance in there for construction, or like, your time has expired, so we're going to have to.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, with that, commissioners, that brings us down to, that completes the questioning rebuttal, um, of the opposition, which was 15 minutes. Before we move into final statement of the opposition for five minutes, and final statement of the applicant for five minutes, I'm going to open it up, uh, to the commission for 20 minutes for any questions on any part of the, of the hearing, not just today, from last month, you know, you can ask any questions to anyone that's, that's here today about the docket PZ 22021. Uh, today, you know, the continuation of the hearing is water issues, but, um, as far as commissioners' questions, you know, that anything is game. So at this point, we'll open it up for questions from the commission. Yes, sir, Mr. Hampton first.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
A neutral expert, I'll, we'll call you, and you're a neutral expert, I'll call you that, I guess. In your opinion, do these, uh, alternative methods, being the cisterns and the sprinklers, are you satisfied that that would be adequate fire protection for this development?
Um, because even though it's in the subdivision, and I forget, what is it, 47 homes, uh, I'm going to treat that no different than I would, uh, a home on Sligo Road, or Organ Creek Road, a home's a home, right? The material worries that. I've got to, I've got to provide fire protection for that. So in terms of this subdivision, yes, I'm satisfied with it. I wish all the homes out there had sprinkler systems, but, you know, they're expensive, uh, we just don't have it. So fire departments all over the country advocate sprinkler systems, I mean, we've been preaching that for years, uh, but it's just hard to get developers to put it in because they are expensive. So, that answer your question?
Thank you, sir.
Before you sit down, Mr. Sitzler, uh, uh, chief, uh, commissioners, is there any other questions for the chief while he's at the microphone? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas. Okay. Okay, hold on just a minute, Miss Davis.
You are satisfied with not having any hydrants in the subdivision?
Pull your microphone closer to you, please.
So you are satisfied with not having any hydrants in the subdivision, and just having the cisterns that I thought were for backup?
I can get by with the cisterns and the sprinkler systems, but I like to have the hydrants, yes. Uh, uh, and no offense to Henry County Water, I wish this was in Oldham County, because you had to have a minimum of 750 gallons, but in Henry County, it just doesn't, you know, it doesn't happen. So in this particular instance, uh, yes, I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas, question for chief?
Mr. Teis might want to come up also, because it might be a legal question for him. And chief, um, what is the standard operating procedure now for inspection or, or maintenance of water sprinklers and residential? I know fire departments have regulations and inspections probably on commercial buildings, but do you have standard operating procedures on residential?
No. It happens, that's going to fall under my, my fire inspector, Major Smith, I'm just going to, I'm going to pass that to him.
Let's get him up here as a fire inspector. I'm wondering how we're going through this route of approval or recommendation.
If you would.
Come up.
This was part of my original point, the waiver we were initially asked to address was related to the water flow with a subdivision with fire with fire hydrants and two 40,000 gallon cisterns. So between when we got the letter on July 15th and today, fire sprinklers and increased cistern size was put on the table. So when Chief responded with his letter that was submitted into the record on July 21st, it wasn't even responding to sprinklers because that hadn't been presented to us yet. But I'll let Mr. Smith answer the question.
Keith Smith, address at Firehouse 309 North First Avenue. In answer to your question about an inspection of the residential type sprinkler system, there is no responsibility put on the fire department for those. Residential sprinklers are a totally different entity, situation versus the commercial type. I'm the one that inspects the sprinklers or makes sure that they have been done. I don't do the actual inspection of it, but I follow the paperwork up on all of our commercial structures that are sprinkled. Residential, we've got plenty of homes, well, not plenty, but there's a number of homes out here in our district that have residential sprinklers in them. They do not get inspected unless the property owner themselves calls a company in to do a yearly inspection. You know, we very much encourage folks to do that, same way with an elevator, I'll say. You know, there's elevator inspections in commercial structures such as this, but your single-family dwellings, once that person puts that elevator in, it's done unless they have a problem with it.
Mr. Urban? I've got a question along these lines. How would the initial plan for sprinkling residential structure be reviewed and/or approved? Would it be the fire department or would it be through our building division? Do you all look at the initial installation or give guidance to us?
I've only, I've only had the opportunity once in recent years to be consulted on a residential sprinkler system, so I'm going to say it falls on the building side and all of that. Another thing with that as well, one main difference about the residential sprinkler system, of course, is monitoring those. I know of many, many systems that are not monitored. Same way the one lady said something about, you know, that, and I believe that was turned out to be commercial systems, that failure of them was because they were turned off. 99% of the time, if one's turned off, our department's not going to know about because they're not monitored. Commercial is different. They are monitored and required. Anybody tampers with part of it, then alarm goes off and we're notified about it.
I do have follow-up questions with other members.
Okay.
From the Henry County Water District. I have several questions. I may have been misunderstood what you said, but did you indicate that the Henry County Water District Board, when they said that they weren't going to, were not going to allow fire hydrants put in, and you mentioned something about if a subdivision was put in in Henry County, they would not be allowing fire hydrants also? Is that correct? Or was I misinformed? In other words, the second portion of this, which is the Henry County Commissioners, I guess, would have to look at the second portion, since Odom County is not having fire hydrants. Is that the same as would be in Henry County?
Exactly understand your question, but as far as that, and I'll refer back to the tariffs, okay? Any subdivision, there will be no fire hydrants installed, zero.
Does other subdivisions in Henry County have cisterns?
Cisterns? No, this will be the first cistern that we have had, yes.
My next question then will be to Mr. Solomon. This is not related to the water, but I guess, you know, since we didn't get to ask questions before, and this could be to, I guess, to staff also. Has there been an interlocal agreement established yet between the two fiscal courts?
Solomon County engineer and stormwater coordinator? No, it is not yet. It was discussed as a proposed binding element at the last hearing.
How would you word the binding element?
Uh, let's see, hang on a second. An interlocal agreement between Henry and Odom County regarding stormwater management shall be executed. That's my proposed binding element. Got it there.
And?
And it should be fiscal courts. It is, sorry.
Then I guess my question would be to our legal counsel and to Mr. Solomon. How do we enforce mitigating post-construction runoff or illicit discharge in another county if those storm basins are being developed in another county?
More thoroughly at the current draft of our stormwater maintenance agreement, which would be signed between the developer and the county and then would be turned over to the HOA. Again, I don't know exactly right offhand. I'd need to look deeper into that.
Mr. Carter?
We don't have any jurisdiction over Henry County unless there's an interlocal agreement.
There is a proposed second binding element related to that, and that's, it was offered actually by the applicant that the homeowners association will be responsible for collecting and paying, and for paying for Odom County stormwater fee for the Henry County lots.
So do you have some recollection from speaking to anyone, I guess, from the Odom County Stormwater Board about collection of fees from HOAs?
Yes, that it would be established through the interlocal agreement.
In Henry County or the HOA?
Henry County, I believe is how the proposed binding element is being worded.
HOA would not be in agreement?
HOA would pay.
Fees. Just wondering how collection of fees with an HOA will be established for that stormwater fee?
Establish that through the interlocal agreement.
Henry County collect those fees?
That's the way the agreement is formed.
Binding element says the HOA pay the fee, and if Henry County wants to pick up that fee instead of the HOA, then the interlocal agreement will state that. One or the other is going to do it. And let me just tell you, you know, we never did have these discussions because we don't have an approved development plan. So it isn't, you know, kind of waiting to see if this were approved and then we would approach both Henry and Odom County fiscal courts with some kind of proposed interlocal agreement.
So the recommendation would be go to, if the binding elements are not agreed upon by those two courts?
Binding element, so they would have to be agreed upon for the development to proceed, I believe.
Thank you. Just one last question from Mr. Carter, I, Mr. Urban. Is the waiver still on the table or was it taken off the table? I don't know what was.
I believe the initial waiver for fire flow is on the table. We either approve it, deny it, or dispense with it, and in this case, I think that we dispense with it only because it doesn't exist anymore because we've been told there are no fire hydrants. Then Mr. Carter and I have been talking about whether or not another waiver is required as proposed by the opposition, and it's my opinion that it isn't because in the regulation it states a mitigation alternative, and I don't think we need to apply a waiver to something that's allowed within the regulations. You can ask Mr. Carter if he agrees with that.
Mr. Carter?
I agree with that. The question is, you either have fire hydrants with adequate flow or you approve the mitigation, and that mitigation has to first be approved by the fire department. The fire department has to approve that it's adequate, and then the board has to determine if they're satisfied with the mitigation.
Mr. Douglas said answer your question, sir? Okay. Any additional questions? Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Faubert?
Well, on that point, I just want clarification. There really are no waivers needed right now then, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Any additional questions on this docket? Okay. Seen none? We'll now move into the final statement by the opposition, and you have five minutes. Mr. Baker?
Chair members of the commission, I'll be brief, so if anyone's ready to speak after me, please by all means come up and speak. You know, after today's public hearing, I believe we have more questions than we had before today's public hearing. You know, we've heard about individual residential sprinklers. We also have heard, you know, once they're installed, we don't know who inspects them. We don't know, is there an annual inspection? Same goes for the cisterns. How are we going to be assured that this mitigation plan that's being proposed will actually function correctly to protect life and property? We don't know. I also maintain that waivers should be on the table because there is, been no demonstration that minimum fire flow as required by subdivision regulation 7.3 is achievable. Also, section 7.7 is still there. Other infrastructure facility standards, A, water supply. Every subdivision shall be provided with a complete water distribution system adequate to serve the area being developed with pipelines, comma, valves, comma, fire hydrants, comma, and other water facilities, period. This language was crafted to include those components. They have the opportunity to not include those components in that statement. They also have the opportunity to put a mitigation plan provision underneath section 7.7. There isn't one. This is a requirement that needs to be met, and it's not being met, and that is a reason for this commission to deny this subdivision. And as far as, the reason for, or one of the many reasons for these subdivision regulations, and I quote, "section I for the intent and purpose of these subdivision regulations" is to ensure that public facilities are available and will have sufficient capacity to serve proposed subdivision upon its completion. Again, we're belaboring points here because we have questions about whether or not there's adequate infrastructure to serve this subdivision. And as it relates to fire protection, in the dead of winter time at 3:00 in the morning, can we ensure that response is going to be there without fire hydrants to adequately protect this subdivision? I'm not sure that I get by infusing a ton of confidence in answering that question if I was a commissioner. And that's all I have to conclude with from my statement. Please, anyone else that wants to speak, come up.
Andrew, I will need to get you sworn in. Ms. Edgar?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Henryon, 1309 Park Shore Road, La Grange. There's so, so many other issues here other than water, but I want people to realize on the commission that the sprinkler system is not a silver bullet. I've had some experience with this myself, but I got online when I found out over the weekend that there was this proposal, and I was really surprised to find out a couple things, because I thought sprinkler systems installed would be extremely expensive. According to their association, it's only a dollar and 35 cents per square foot, which is only between 1 and 2% for building a house. So I was trained or educated as an economist, so I want you to think about that. Why wouldn't every house in America have a sprinkler system? Well, I also got online and I found 15 conditions that should always be raised as red flags with sprinkler systems. Here's another one. What steps should you take to maintain your home sprinkler systems? Potential problems with home sprinkler systems. The truth is that these systems often fail. They have, I read things in here that was talking about water pipes being congested. I think more important, I've had firsthand experience with this myself, of pipes freezing, are these pipes, this domestic system, is it going to be only in the house or in the kitchen? What about in barn, or excuse me, well, barns too, but what about in garages? Often these systems wind up freezing and cause problems, and I think that you'd find that a relatively high percent, much higher than a commercial with individual homes, people are going to, if they're forced to put these systems in, they're going to basically disconnect them.
Senator, the time is up, so thank you, sir. All right, with that, we're down now to five minutes for final statement by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members of the commission. You've heard a lot about questions people have. You've not heard a tremendous amount of evidence from the opposition. I think that's important. You need to remember that you need to base your decision on evidence that's in the record that was brought to you either through your staff, through submissions to your staff, or in this hearing and in the, in last month's hearing. Among the evidence that you've already heard are, is, are these points. The minimum lot size in this district in this area is one acre. The minimum lot size in the subdivision is 2.4 acres. The average lot size is over three acres. The setbacks, the minimums are 50, but we're actually complying with the lesprey deed restriction setback which exceeds that. So we're meeting all the setbacks, we're meeting the lot size, obviously we're proposing to meet the use restrictions, which is single-family use. You've heard testimony from traffic experts, from Mr. Solomon, testimony's been presented from the state about the suitability of area roads, about the suitability of the roads proposed within the subdivision. You've heard from your health department about the fact that the, the property will work for onsite septic systems, and if there are amendments that need to be made to individual sites, those can be made based on the size of the site and the soil conditions. And you did hear specifically Commissioner Douglas at the last meeting, we talked about the stormwater system, locating the stormwater system in its most logical place, which is at the bottom of the subdivision from an elevation standpoint, and offering to Odom County the opportunity to design that, which was previously agreed to by the Henry County Judge Executive in a letter that was submitted to this commission. And we even added to, added to that, that the homeowners association would agree to collect and remit payments for Henry County lots to Odom County, because I believe I said about this way at the time, we don't want Mr. Solomon and others in Odom County doing work for which they're not compensated. They need to review the design, they may need to review the maintenance over time, and we want to make sure that they're compensated for that. Henry County doesn't currently have a mechanism for assessing those fees, and so if that mechanism cannot for some reason be included in an interlocal agreement, which we would hope that it can, we would volunteer on behalf of the homeowners association to collect those fees and remit those to Odom County. Now, you heard in the statement from the opposition about response time, and I don't know if you were all scared, that was the intent. We want to scare you, oh my gosh, what's going to happen? Well, when you have a residential sprinkler system, the response time is the same 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, one minute. Response time is one minute. As soon as that head gets hot enough, water starts being applied to the fire immediately. It doesn't matter whether there's a professional firefighter on the way, a volunteer, whether he's coming from Ballardsville or La Grange, response time is the same. Now, in order to make sure, we've heard about maintenance, what's, who's going to maintain these systems, who's going to inspect these systems, we would agree as a binding element, and we would agree to put this in the deed restrictions that affect the subdivision, that annual inspections are that affect the subdivision, that annual inspections are required in each home to ensure the continued operation and viability of the residential sprinkler system. In talking with the folks at Landmark, that comes out to about $150 inspection a year. That's something akin to the service plan I have with my HVAC contractor to come out and look at my furnace and look at my air conditioner every year to make sure it's operating. So we have no problem making that commitment on behalf of future homeowners. As I said before, the regulations that you all enforce have alternate methods of compliance. We have provided more than enough evidence that we will comply with those alternate methods of compliance. We're providing even without sprinklers, 160% of what the required onsite water is. With sprinklers, we're providing more than three times. With that, I would ask that you follow the regulations and approve the subdivision.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that, docket PZ 22021 is completed. And as always, I will call on Mr. Urban to kind of outline what's being requested on the preliminary subdivision plan. It's been a very complicated, very long-term hearings that we've had. We've had two hearings on this one docket, so I want to thank you all for coming out and participating. And now it's down to a decision that the commission will make on this docket. And Mr. Urban, if you would, outline what's being requested on this preliminary subdivision plan, docket PZ 22021.
And this is a request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan. There is a waiver on the table, and I think you could also have a discussion about, you know, in my opinion, that you need to dispense with the initial waiver for fire flow and then consider whether or not there should be other waivers. It's up to you, you are the commission, I'm just making a recommendation. I'm not sure whether I need to read all the binding elements first or have that discussion about waivers. I think that's the more important thing at this point.
Okay, let's do the waivers first, a discussion on the waivers, and then we can add the binding elements. Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
We have a discussion on the waivers, so, okay. All right. What, I guess before we get, before I ask for a motion on waivers, would you outline what the waiver consideration should be?
The first one again is the initial one, it's for section 270060, part six, for capacity standards for fire protection, for fire flow. There aren't hydrants, so, you know, I believe we should dispense with that somehow, either make a decision that now is irrelevant and it's not needed. There was discussion by some, and I'm sorry, I gotta find my notes here, on section 7.7 in the subdivision regulations, other infrastructure, and there was a suggestion that there was a requirement for a waiver there. Whether or not we need to discuss a waiver for the alternative firefighting protection methodology, I don't believe we do, because it's in the regulations, but I think the commission has to have that discussion.
Mr. Carter, would you just, I know you've said the same thing, basically, that you don't believe that, I guess, how would you suggest that we handle the waiver that's listed in the docket on the capacity standards for fire protection as far as the hydrants are concerned?
There's nothing being waived. The requirement is you have to have a fire hydrant that provides adequate flow within 400 feet of all dwelling houses. Or you have to approve an alternate mitigation that has been presented. If you agree that that's sufficient, then that's up to the commission. But there's no waiver, we're not waiving anything.
So your suggestion would be is that what is being offered by the applicant with the sprinklers and the 50,000 gallon two cisterns, 100,000 gallon total, would be adequate to cover the fire protection standards in Oldham County?
It's up to the commission whether they believe it is.
Okay.
It has to be approved by the fire department in the sense that the fire department has to say, we believe this is sufficient if you approve it.
And we heard testimony earlier today from the fire department, fire chief, that he said that those two mitigations would be adequate.
That's not determinative. The commission still has to answer the question whether or not they believe the mitigation is sufficient.
Okay. All right, commissioners, you've heard what the suggestion is of our council and of our staff. What's the feeling of the commission? Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Carter, maybe answer this question. I mean, I'm a little confused, because there was a testimony that was presented about the county ordinance of having a fire hydrant within 400 feet of a dwelling. Was there anything after that county ordinance that says, or other?
Yes. Subsection G.
All right, commissioners, is there, is anybody, is anybody prepared to bring forth a motion on this discussion about the cisterns and the sprinkler system versus, you know, the hydrants? Because, you know, Henry County will not provide, their tariff will not allow them to provide hydrants on this system. Yes, sir, Mr. Hampton?
Chairman, I want to be sure that this motion is just on the water. We're talking about this, the alternative methods.
We don't normally do that, just have a discussion of it.
Okay, but, okay. Your suggestion, Carter, is that we just have a motion to, go ahead and tell us?
This is just an element in the approval or disapproval of the plan.
Okay. All right. Okay, so Mr. Hampton, that would be, you know, if we move forward with a motion to approve this plan, then those elements could be part of the plan, correct?
Correct. As long as you, you know, the record, sir.
As long as you agree with the mitigation factors, which is what I think, without making a, I mean, I'm confused on how you want to proceed with this, sir. Do you agree with the applicant's mitigation factors and the fire department's statements or not?
Okay. And what you're suggesting is, is we can do that in the form of a motion and cover both the approval of the development plan with the binding elements and also, or denial? Or denial, right, sure, okay. All right, commissioners, do you understand what's being discussed here? Mr. Hampton, did that answer your question, sir?
Thanks though, but I just want to be positive. So if I make a motion, it's to approve or deny the development, the development, and then we include the mitigating water circumstances within that.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm seeing, Mr. Carter is our counsel, okay? Yes, sir, that would be correct.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ-22021 with the inclusion of the alternative methods with the cisterns and the sprinklers. I'll need help with adding on the.
If you want me, I will, here's the binding, the proposed binding elements, since you are at least proposing approval. The first is that the approval applies only to the plan presented at the June 28, 2022 and July 26, 2022 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearings. There shall be no subdivision of any lot in a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of dwelling units to 17 per year, beginning with the first record plat. This will be number four. Lots one, two, five, six, seven, and eight shall have shared driveways unless otherwise approved by the KYTC. Number five is the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of the construction plan approval. Number six is the homeowners association shall maintain the cistern system. Number seven is a self-monitoring system to assure the cisterns is always full, must be included. Number eight is an interlocal agreement between Henry and Oldham County fiscal courts regarding stormwater management shall be executed. Number nine is the homeowners association will be responsible for collecting and for paying the Oldham County stormwater fee for the Henry County lots. Number 10 is the detention basins must be in open space and not part of individual lots. Number 11 is lots 76 and 20 shall be revised to meet minimum lot width as presented in applicant's exhibits and approved preliminary subdivision plan submitted, revised, it should be revised, preliminary subdivision plan submitted to the file within 30 days. Number 12 is the cistern design, maintenance, and metering must be approved by the Henry County Water District during subdivision construction plan approval. Number 13 is all residential structures must install sprinklers in compliance with NFPA standards. Number 14 is annual inspections of the sprinkler system shall be conducted in the requirement, and this requirement shall be in the deed restrictions.
That's right. All right, we got a motion on the floor. Let me ask, Mr. Ashburner, do you all agree to those binding elements? If you would, just put it on the record, sir, please.
My chair, we do agree to the binding elements, as read.
All right, we got a motion on the floor with the attached binding elements on docket PZ, yeah, 22021. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Mr. Elder, seconds. All right, now, open it up for discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan with attached binding elements. Mr. Carter?
The motion has to state, if you're making a motion to approve, the motion has to state that the subdivision plan meets with all of Oldham County subdivision regulations. And zoning ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Hampton, are you okay with adding that to your motion, sir?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Elder, are you okay with accepting it as the second? Any discussion now on the motion to approve the development plan? Yes, sir. Mr. Douglas?
And I'm gonna raise the issue about the binding element with HOA paying the stormwater collection fees. I believe that in this county, those collection of stormwater fees are assessed on property tax values.
Okay.
I'm not sure in HOA, if it goes defunct, how we collect those stormwater fees in Henry County based on that, even if we have an interlocal agreement, and we don't have that in front of us yet. And I know that these binding elements are conditions that if neither one of them signs, then it doesn't move forward, I guess. But I have the concern about the wording of HOA being committed, so either it needs to be something else added to it, or either there should have been discussions with the stormwater board or the, I guess, our financial advisor at the time.
Mr. Carter, how would you respond to that, sir?
The applicant has suggested.
Is your mic on? Make sure your mic's on.
The applicant as a binding element said the homeowners association would pay the fees regardless of the interlocal agreement.
Mr. Urban, anything you want to add?
In Oldham County, the fee is on your tax bill. If it were collected on a tax bill in Henry County, then we'd have to get Henry County to pay us that money. Well, that's why the applicant has suggested the HOA pay that fee. Again, I'm like, Mr. Carter, I don't know if this is.
Well, the answer is that Oldham County is not gonna be able to put a stormwater fee for Henry County on the tax bill. On Oldham County tax bill.
Douglas, any further discussion? Amy can answer. Okay. Ms. Albee?
It would be no different than by Shelby County collecting a Ballardsville fire tax fee. The interlocal agreement has to be worked out between the fiscal court and the PVA office with the agreement that they collect it. The sheriff's office collects it and remits it to the appropriate taxing agency. So it would have to be an interlocal agreement between those agencies. We have that cross-agreement now between other counties for collecting taxes for fire districts that overlap county lines.
Mr. Douglas, does that answer your question, sir? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Baker?
When we think about, you know, the fire protection minimum standards that we're kind of setting forth here, you know, there's a lot of things that have to go right for this to work. So we've got cisterns that have to automatically fill. We have to have a fire department that sends firefighters out that know when they're in the area, they have to use this. I know we have areas within this county that, where we use, as I'll use the chief's term, T-box area. And that's not ideal. That's, again, that's minimum, we're toting water. I live in Westport, and most of our district is.
Make sure you don't testify, Mr. Ender.
Much of the county is in this T-box area. I don't think that our goal here should be to meet minimum standards, and that shouldn't be the standard that we hold ourselves to. The idea behind this commission is to make sure that we are being responsible with the development, and in this area, the resources are obviously constrained or at the very least controversial. And I would just ask the commission to really consider what we should do and whether or not we believe that this is the responsible thing to do with the mitigation, you know, proposals that's been set forth.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor to approve the preliminary subdivision plan with the attached binding elements? Any further discussion? Okay, seen none. We will proceed to a vote, and I'll call on Ms. Edgar to take the vote, and this is a motion to approve docket PZ-22021. Go ahead.
Ms. Nasser? Oh. Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Hampton? Mr. Halfling?
No.
Mr. Finney?
No.
Mr. Favi? Mr. Ender? Mr. Elder? Mr. Douglas? Ms. Davis?
All right, the motion on docket PZ 22021 failed on a vote of four to six. Mr. Carter? Okay, before anybody, everybody leaves here, commissioners, I've been advised by our council, that, excuse me, with the outcome of the motion that we had on the floor, we need a motion to deny. That's what I've been advised by Mr. Carter, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, with reasons. So we need a motion from the floor, from the commissioners, for denial, but we also need to have some reasons attached to that. need to have some reasons attached to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with respect to, thank you, with respect to PZ dash two-two dash zero-two-one, I'll move for denial of the preliminary plan as presented. Based on testimony and evidence presented, I find that it falls short of the subdivision regulations, and in particular with respect to the requirements for fire flow and suppression.
Okay. Is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Who seconded it, Mr. Ender? Did you second? Okay, Mr. Ender seconds. Any discussion now on the motion to deny on docket PZ two-two zero-two-one? Any discussion? Okay, seen none? We'll proceed.
All right, so everybody remember, you're voting for a motion to deny.
Correct.
Motion in favor is to deny.
Yes. All right, everybody understand that this motion that you'll be voting on is a motion to deny, so if you vote yes, that means you vote to deny. So, okay. All right, Ms. Edgar, if you would, let's do the vote. This is a motion to deny.
Ms. Davis? No. Mr. Douglas? Mr. Elder? Mr. Ender? Mr. Faubie? Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
All right, the motion to deny the preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ two-two zero-two-one passes on a vote of six to four.
All right. Thank you all. Commissioners, before we break, Amy might have something to add, and I've got something new before we break here also.
All right, we will have, or you will have a planning commission meeting next month. We will have the, or you will have the continuation of Sanctuary Falls of Schuler Lane, so that one was asked to be continued, so that will be on the September, or July, what month we're in, July, August, September.
Have everybody move outside, please, so we can finish up our hearing.
You will have a meeting next month.
Okay. And with that, we're gonna, before we break, we're gonna invite everyone to lunch over across the room here, I'm sorry, commissioners, next door, to thank Ms. Albee for her twenty-three year service to county government and thirteen years with the planning commission. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and let's show a bicycle.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. I'll miss everyone, just come see me in the clerk's office.
And we will have an SRC meeting on Thursday evening, so, we stand adjourned.